We are going to open tonight's meeting with a public hearing to receive your comments on cannabis in Simsbury, whether you're for it, whether you're against it. The board felt it was a good idea to have our residents come to us. There's been multiple, so far two hearings at the zoning commission with a continued one going to December 5th. As of tonight, we don't have plans to take any action, but we are here to hear from the public. I would just like to ask that, having to have you all here to express your views, we would like to limit this to three minutes tonight because we have a large number of people here, so please keep your, and we will time you. We'll try to give you a little warning. Some people don't like a warning, but we will try to give you a warning. But we will listen to what you have to say. We've asked town staff, excuse me. We have asked town staff to take notes on things where we want to collect facts that we can bring to our board and make sure that we're hearing what's really going on across the state and Massachusetts. And I just also want to mention there's a six-month moratorium in place on the zoning commission that goes through May 2023. And right now, that's how we're going to proceed. So we do have some written comments that we're going to read, but we'll save those till after. So if you don't want to listen to the written comments, you do not have to. So our first person on, I have a list here. I call your name. If you're not on the list and you want to come up and speak, you're welcome to come up after we get through the sign-in sheet. The first person on my list is Joan Coe. So let's set the timer here. Three minutes. And Joan?
Okay. I am against increasing the distribution and sale of cannabis, marijuana in Simsbury. David Murray from the Hudson Institute wrote, quote, "The Colorado Experiment legalized Marijuana's Impact in Colorado," end quote. Not only did the promised benefits, both financial and on behalf of public safety, not come to pass, but in multiple areas of daily life, the metrics have worsened. Moreover, the data from Colorado have been accompanied by several years of greater medical science awareness of the health risks of marijuana exposure. Easier access, greater prevalence, highly psychoactive potency from increased THC, a continued criminal element, and more intense daily uses has all occurred since the experiment began, end quote. Venture Capital is promoting the increase of sales in cannabis, marijuana. A hot fit current, quote, "Connecticut's Venture Capital Fund is among the first institutional investors to jump into the growing cannabis business, committing 1.25 million to the manufacture of edibles intended to enhance energy focus and mental health," end quote. Cureleaf LLC, located in Simsbury, 34 Hop Meadow Street, headquartered in West End, Massachusetts. Cureleaf has a presence in 21 states and owns and operates 144 dispensaries and 29 cultivation sites with a focus on highly populated states, including Arizona, Florida, Illinois, Massachusetts, New Jersey, New York, and Pennsylvania. Millions of dollars in lobbying efforts venture capitalists will corrupt the system. According to the CDC, using marijuana can lead to numerous adverse effects. Marijuana can significantly affect the individual's cognitive abilities, leading to poor memory and decision-making, loss of coordination, difficulty learning. Impaired cognition can lead to participation in risky behavior and poor life choices that can have serious consequences. Marijuana leads to negative effects of major organs such as heart, lungs, and can cause rapid heartbeat, increased blood pressure and lung tissue. The substance increases the risk for the development of heart disease and stroke. Cannabis like Sensus Syndrome is a condition of severe nausea, vomiting, and following marijuana use, which can cause abdominal pain, dehydration, emsophagus inflammation, imperforation, poor nutrition, and tooth breakdown. Using recreational marijuana can also lead to psychological effects. The CDC describes correlates with marijuana, mental illness, including depression, anxiety, that can be short effects such as altered perception, reality, paranoid thoughts, and long-term coordination. The most alarming field finding of side effects is suicidal thoughts and attempts of him related to marijuana use. Marijuana is a mild-altering drug causing serious mental health issues. And that will cause pain and suffer. Andrew Glassman, chairman of Pullman and Comley Cannabis CBD and hemp practice, spoke to Fox 61 Morning News of the business opportunities and workplace policies, the first day of legalization of marijuana. Andrew Glassman is the husband of Mary Glassman.
Time is up.
Thank you. Your time is up, yes. I've said it a few times. I just want to make sure that you do not put, can I come at the end and read the rest of it?
No.
No. You can send it to us.
I can post all my comments on Simsbury@Twitter at Joan Coe and Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Okay. I have Mary Turner up next. I have Tom Turner coming up instead.
I can speak as one.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. You're up.
We have a representative form of government, and the majority of the decisions made by the town are decided by the boards and commissions. But we also have the other opportunity for the public to weigh in on important matters when they come before the whole town that affect so many different areas, including the Board of Education, the Police Department. And so I would like to suggest that the Board of Selectmen consider trying to obtain the widest possible view of consensus for this issue. I urge them to consider the referendum route, and the question is just too important to be decided without inclusion of a referendum on the matter. And I am certain that the zoning board members here, I'm sorry, the Board of Selectmen members here, will recognize that support for a very important decision that has public backing will be much more readily accepted than without such public support. In early September, my wife and I sought to determine the feasibility of gathering signatures on a petition to push for a referendum. And we were outside Fitzgerald's in the Big Y, and we solicited signatures for a couple days. And during those two days, we were able to obtain 128 valid signatures in seven hours, or about 18 an hour, supporting the referendum route. That rate would have allowed two persons to gather the required 1,888 signatures in about 20 days. But there simply was not enough time between July and September 9th to organize such an effort and carry it out. Our takeaway from this trial run, however, was that at least three-quarters of the people who we approached agreed to sign our petition to have this matter appear on a ballot, that these signatures were being obtained at a rapid pace, and that this indicated that Simsbury residents really wanted to see the process done right, not by a small minority or by a few members on a board or commission. They would like to see it done through referendum, as other important matters often appear. And this would allow the citizens of the town to weigh in on such an important issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You have to write exactly your three minutes. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Oopsie. Okay, Mary, you're, you're, I have Barry Klein here.
All right, thank you.
State your name and your address.
Yes, Barry Klein. I live at 4 Bob White Way in Wheaton, Connecticut. Right, good evening. My name's Barry Klein. I live at 4 Bob White Way in Wheaton. I've lived in Simsbury for 30 years now. I raised a family here, and I have a son who is now in college. I'm sure you're going to see all kinds of studies, cost-benefit analyses, spreadsheets. I'm going to keep it a lot simpler than that, okay? I'm just going to talk. There was a time when we tried to keep drug dealers out of Simsbury, out of our town. Now we're looking at giving them a license to do business here. There was a time when we tried to keep our children away from drug users. Now we're looking to put a business in possibly and have them congregate next to our town movie theater where our children congregate. There is and always has been a difference between what is legal and what is right. There is and always has been a difference between what is profitable and what is right. So what I'm hoping is, I sincerely hope the town, through the Board of Selectmen, decides to do what is right and vote down the sale of drugs in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim and Mary Mayer.
I did not think I was signing up to speak.
Oh, well, okay, come on.
Okay, so I just want to say, I completely agree with everybody that's already spoken. I would say, Mary and I have raised three boys in town, so we understand very clearly the dangers of drugs and what it could do to children. We've been very fortunate, but we really are concerned about with the direction of towns going in, if we make this decision. So I would say that I would, I totally agree on the idea of having a referendum. Let's have the people speak, and I really feel strongly that we know that there would be a very strong vote against it. So I'd say, let's vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan?
Hello.
Hi.
I am Ryan Shurm at 206 FireTown. I wanted to thank the board for having this public forum for us to be able to speak. In 2005, I was caught in a death spiral. I had a severe case of generalized anxiety disorder. This was so strong that I became unable to eat, and I experienced this severe case of anorexia. This caused me to lose weight rapidly, which increased my anxiety. I first became uncomfortable in public, then at school, which I dropped out due to an inability to attend, and then at work, and finally in my home culminating in my own bedroom. There was no escaping from it. The cycle continued. I would lose weight because of my anxiety, and that would feed my anxiety and would make it worse. I tried multiple appetite stimulants at the direction of my doctors and antiemetics, including Marinol, which is a synthetic form of THC, a psychoactive ingredient in cannabis. That's commonly used for glaucoma to address pain and other things, and not commonly for appetite stimulation. None of these things worked for me. At the urging of a friend and at a risk, I tried using smoked cannabis in small amounts. This had an immediate positive effect on my appetite that I would describe as a miraculous level of efficacy. Over the next six months, I was able to gain back 60 pounds. My anxiety slowly waned away. I was able to get it under control, and I re-enrolled in school, and I obtained a bachelor's degree in journalism. Now, this sounds okay, I guess, but the only problem here is that it was very illegal, and the product that I was receiving was unpredictable. But having become very acquainted with cannabis, the true absurdity of its illegality became clear to me. To think that I could be jailed for what I was doing was unconscionable. Sometimes the cannabis I would get would be too strong, and it would make me feel more high than I really wanted to be. Worse, it put me in touch with dangerous people, with no protection from the police. On one occasion, I went to an associate's apartment where he told me he had no cannabis that day, but he did have OxyContin. Another associate was robbed at gunpoint the day after I visited him. It was these experiences that led me to take action in 2009. After I returned to school and formed a student chapter of the National Organization for the Reformed Marijuana Laws, that's NORML, the first chapter in the Greater Atlanta area where I served as the first president. To be clear, NORML does not promote getting high, but there are two primary purposes. One, to discontinue imprisoning those using cannabis personally and responsibly. And two, and this is the most important one, to provide safe access for those who choose to use it. These goals have been achieved in Connecticut in two stages, first with decriminalization in 2011, and then with the full legalized personal use last year. The second and most recent stage has opened the door to establishing a regulated industry to achieve the goal of safe access. Product can now be manufactured openly under government inspection and not in a clandestine fashion. Product will be packaged with proper warnings and with accurate amounts of active ingredients so dosage can be done properly. Product is sold exclusively to adults in stores, and it's this decision that we're considering here tonight to promote safe access to consenting adults. And when I traveled to the cannabis store, Insa, in Springfield two weeks ago to prepare for these hearings, I saw a billboard that said, "Our prices beat the street." There's no reason to have a billboard like that without acknowledging there's a black market that we're going to put out of business by making it available. Safe access is the only path forward.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have James Staub. Hello?
Hi. I don't have anything prepared, but I just kind of echo everything that Ryan said. I'm here in support of it. I think that there's a lot of fear mongering going on right now, and I think that it's a little bit silly for us to be looking at marijuana the way we do, as a town with so many liquor stores. And I think that it's a little bit asinine to be kind of considering it that way. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I have Hillary Staub.
Hillary Staub. I live at 440 FireTown, and I agree with the previous two speakers. I don't have a lot to say today. I came to the meeting last month about extending the moratorium, and I just found it ridiculous that the other two items that were being voted on were liquor licenses. And I believe there was even like a little joke there about, you know, parents getting relief or something with alcohol at the hockey place or something, which I thought was kind of sick because I heard all these effects of marijuana. But yeah, let's keep putting liquor stores in town. It is not the 1930s, free for madness. It is 2022, and the science is there. And I support businesses being able to come in here and open up a dispensary and us get the tax revenue. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. David Johnson?
Thank you for having us. My name is David Johnson. I live at 21 Stillwood Chase in Wheaton. I'm here to oppose this measure. And I can agree with Mrs. Coe's comments, having been born in Denver, and now I go back there and see my relatives, and it has drastically changed the landscape of that state over the last two decades. In my view, after I left the military for a couple decades, I'm always looking at what we're doing to set this country up for the next generation. How are we going to make this country more prosperous, stronger? How are we going to be smarter and better than our adversaries? No one's going to convince me this is going to help our youth in this town. If you can, I'd love to hear it. Chris and I went to high school together here. I grew up here with my three brothers. I left college, came back, and for the board, I would truly recommend you put this, as others have offered, down the referendum route, but not in the spring. I looked at all three other referendums you've offered to this town that ask the voters for significant investment, and it's in May, off election cycles. These types of decisions need to be put forward, the town, in election cycles in the fall. I look at the referendums, and it's 5% of the town's 18,000 voters. That's not a plurality. That's not something you should use going forward, saying, hey, the town voted on this referendum, therefore they approved it. That's not good governance. It's not. And we have much more pressing problems to solve in this community. This will create problems, in my view. And I understand those views, and I respect all of them, but putting a dispensary near a movie theater, as I saw the zoning commission report, what do you think that movie theater is going to smell like? Run up to Southern Massachusetts up 91 and see what cannabis and marijuana dispensaries has done to the high schools in Springfield. It's not pretty. And that's what your challenge here tonight is. Kids over tax revenue. The next generation over tax revenue. Put it up for referendum, fall of 2024. Not this May, not next May. Put it up where people actually see on it and vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Schmiderling?
Yeah, I thought I was signing up to attend.
Oh, come on, okay.
So I cut out.
Okay. So now I can welcome up anybody else who'd like to come up. Sure, come on up. State your name and your street address.
David Moore, 18, Bob White Way, Wheaton, Connecticut. I am a former vice chair of the Economic Development Commission of the town of Simsbury, current chair of the Democratic Town Committee. I do not speak for either of those bodies. I am speaking in my individual capacity. Thank you for having this. I am against the idea of a blanket prohibition. I don't believe that that is good governance either. I also, however, agree that having a referendum would be a very good idea. I think that you will find that whether it is scheduled in May or during a November election, it will actually pass. So I think that it would behoove the Board of Selectmen, as well as the zoning folks, to listen to what the people actually want. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Louis George. I'm an attorney at Hassan &amp; George. I represent Cureleaf, and they are located at 34 Hot Meadow Street, have been here since 2014, employ 65 people in the town, and pay a large sum, over $300,000 in personal property tax to the town, and they've been a good corporate citizen since they've been here. They do not sell retail. Their position is that they don't care what Simsbury does with regard to retail use. It should be left to the community to determine that. And different communities are going to determine for their own benefits which way they want to go. So they don't take a position on that. They have no desire to sell adult recreational use products in Simsbury, but they are a cultivator, a producer, and provide production throughout the state, and were recently granted their combined license, hybrid license, for both the medical marijuana and adult use. So the concern for us is that any action taken to consideration in existing business that's ongoing has been a good corporate citizen and will continue to be so, and provide the language that is necessary to protect their ongoing interests. For example, if there were a referendum, whether there's one or not, doesn't necessarily affect them, but could if it's worded improperly and not worded to protect their interest. And I do think their interest, given their track record here, should be protected and taken into consideration, whether it's at this level and this board takes a position with regard to in ordinance, or whether it's a referendum, or whether it's back to zoning, which is proceeding. And that's been our position, to make sure that the language is in there that properly protects them and allows them to continue under their present licenses moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Dr. Michael Williams. I own a dental practice at 965 Hot Meadow Street. Been there for 25 years. I love this town. I like what this town brought me in to be. I love being here. I can't say that accepting cannabis dispensary in our town to sell publicly is a great idea. I think it's going to change what our image is, what our brand is, what everybody wants their kid to come to this town to be educated. I don't think that's going to be great. I don't think it's a good idea. As far as the financial benefits of it, I don't need to tell you what your budget is, but when you look at, I've heard so many things at the zoning, and I don't feel educated enough to speak on them, but I will say that the financial benefits of this really aren't. I don't think that's going to be a positive aspect to add to this town. I just really would like your true consideration to not accept it. I am not against medical marijuana. Marijuana is a drug. Cannabis, a drug. Positive effects, negative effects. Definition of a drug. I think when you look at the possibilities of what that's going to do to this town, it's not a great idea. Thank you for giving it all your good consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Good evening. Anne Metzger, 8 Homestead Road, resident of town, 36 years. I would like to say that I've heard for the majority of the us who live in town, we are against bringing a distribution center here. We love this town for its character, for its education system, for its safety, and I think, we have six children, all raised here in town, and I cannot tell you, there's no better town in the state to raise kids and a family. And my in-laws have been here for 60 years, and I think the whole nature of having a drug production place in town and possibly retail is not a good idea. I think if you've heard, most of the people speaking up against have been us as citizens, and the people speaking for have been people who needed treatment or the legal system coming forward to step forward for the company. And I think, having looked at the chart and seeing all the other towns around us who provide cannabis, that's fine, but should we stand up as Simsbury and say, that's not the character of our town? We've been here for 400 years, and it's really lovely to be able to live in a town that we have no problem with safety, we have no problem with anything going on in town. Our kids, since when they were little, could bike to town, could walk to town. This has been a lovely center to have children, and I think our taxes and our values speak highly of this town and should be more considered than just a business coming into town, that the residents of the town would gratefully choose not to have that come. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Lori Boyko. I live at 15 Oakhurst Road in Simsbury. I've lived in town since my first child was born in 1997. I have two other children, a 19-year-old and a soon-to-be 16-year-old. And I want to start with a few facts. I spoke at the zoning meeting, but I've done even more research, as if I haven't done enough already. Every year since 2013, when marijuana has been legalized in Colorado, a comparative study has been done from the previous years to provide data for decision-making, and that data is regularly published. Since recreational marijuana was legalized, traffic deaths where drivers tested positive for marijuana increased 138% when all Colorado deaths increased only 29%. Since recreational marijuana was legalized, the percent of all Colorado traffic deaths involving drivers who tested positive for marijuana increased to 20% in 2020, when it had previously only been 11% in 2013. Of the 120 drivers in fatal wrecks who tested positive, 117 were found to have THC Delta 9, the psychoactive ingredient marijuana in their blood. This indicates usage within hours, not within days. Of those fatal accidents, only 38% had marijuana only. 24% had marijuana and alcohol. Another 25% had marijuana and other drugs. 13% were marijuana and alcohol and other drugs. This is not just about smoking a joint like people did at Woodstock. I said before, there's a tremendous difference between decriminalization, legalization, and actively promoting the sale of marijuana in our town. I have no objection to my friends who want to smoke a joint, but as Barry said, not only is the location right near the movie theater, the location is also right next to McDonald's, where the kids all go hang out. That's where my teenagers, who have nowhere to go, say, I'm going down to McDonald's to hang out with my friends and get a burger. They'd be right next to this dispensary. If we are thinking we're going to keep this out of the hands of our kids, we are kidding ourselves. We can't keep the vapes out of the high school. And it's not, I've heard the statistic that it can be up to 99% potency, and I thought, wow, that seems really high. So I went on So I went online and I looked at the stores in Massachusetts. Not only can it be, that's what they're selling, in addition to marijuana cheesecake and marijuana gummies that the kids are getting their hands on. Since marijuana was legalized in Colorado, calls to poison control for marijuana exposure have tripled for children eight to 12 years old. I would like to see an affirmative reason in favor. I've heard a lot of reasons against. I haven't heard a single reason why we should do this. We can always approve later, but we can't put the genie back in the bottle.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Alexander Pepe. I live on Seminary Road. I'm nervous. The irony is, I speak in front of people all the time. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, and I specialize in co-occurring disorders. The difference is, when I get in front of a room, people want to actually listen. They want to hear new ideas. They're open-minded. Everybody's come here with their minds made up. They went on Google. They found quotes that support their already cemented beliefs. They found statistics from shoddy research that pointed to marijuana being a gateway drug. Every day, I deal with people that have actually destroyed their lives. Not once has it been from marijuana. All right? I do this professionally, okay? I also know personally, because I'm in recovery, all right? Alcohol, which is sold in abundance here, destroyed my life. I wanted to end it. But with marijuana, and here's a good reason why we should have it. I've raised a family. I built a career. I pay my mortgage, taxes, I vote. Couldn't do that with alcohol. When I use cannabis, I practice gratitude, cognitive coping. And I got to say, this is the third meeting I've been to in a month. My heart is pounding because I've been vilified. At least, that's how I feel. Everybody talks about the crime it's going to bring. Where is your evidence? Has anyone actually been to a dispensary that is opposing this? You have. You see teenagers in there? Because you have to scan your ID to get into the buildings and scan your ID when you actually want to make a purchase. There is nobody outside trying to score illegal drugs from people that are 21. Somebody said that at the first meeting, that the $90,000, which I don't think is anything to snub at from the tax revenue, was irrelevant because that's what a cop's salary is. Why would we have police officers stationed at this dispensary? Do we have them at the liquor stores? I don't know what else I can say. We put it to a referendum. I'd like to know what the median age of the voters is, all right? There are people here with good intentions that are looking out for the future generations. They're making decisions that really won't affect them, all right? They're speaking from second- and third-hand accounts. They're nephews that smoked a joint and flushed their life down the toilet. Instead of using this for fear mongering, talk to your nephews. Talk to the people with the problems. Ask what else is going on in their life. It's probably trauma. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else here? Oops.
Hi, my name is Annette O'Barrow. I live on Seminary Road. I'm an occupational therapist, and I work in skilled nursing. Most of like today, I worked with patients, a 41-year-old who has a 15-year-old daughter and is in my facility because of alcohol. I see a whole lot of alcohol people, people who are recovering from alcohol. Usually, as an occupational therapist, I'm having to work on their balance skills again because they've completely shot their balance, their withdraw, irritable, angry, just emotional. So seeing like how many alcohol places that we have here, but not allowing something that does not, like according to the CDC, you cannot overdose on marijuana. Like, it's pretty much almost impossible to overdose on marijuana. And as an occupational therapist who's been doing this for several years, I've never once had a patient come in with marijuana that I've had to help rehab. Alcohol, all the time. So I think it's a good alternative, especially coming after COVID, people dealing with mental health issues who need help. A lot of times, alcohol is that help. That's the support that these people need, and it destroys them. Whereas with marijuana, it does not. It can kind of help, it can help you cope. And I feel like shutting that down for people, I don't think that that's a good move. So I would be in support of it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Aldrich, 21 Riverside Road. And I just want to add, first of all, I am opposed to having the dispensary in town for all the reasons that many have discussed. But I want to add that many towns around us have already outright banned the sale in larger towns like Southington, smaller towns like Avon. And that's going to increase people coming into Simsbury if this dispensary is allowed, more people. So that's one of my concerns. My next concern is that the cannabis recreational is new, and we're still learning about it. They're still creating regulations on driving while having this drug in your system and the effects. And we are not ready. I don't think that we're ready to have recreation cannabis allowed until we know more about it. And then my final thing is that many people up here are saying alcohol is bad and cannabis is better. Well, alcohol is not good. Alcohol has been around for 1,000 years. They tried prohibition. It did have an effect. But I think if alcohol was introduced now, we would be just as cautious as with the cannabis dispensary. And it's something that we really need to think about. And I think we really need to understand and learn more before it's allowed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Witness Protection Program. I can't tell you. I'm Mike Payne, 72 Holcomb Street. I'm here having some concerns about legalizing recreational cannabis. I have zero problems with medically prescribed cannabis because of personal situations. I absolutely understand that and have no problem with that. Unfortunately, with recreational cannabis, because of my day job, we have to drug test our drivers. And the only available drug test as of last Wednesday is, is it in your system? And it's anywhere from within the last 30 to 45 days. There is not a current test that will test if you are currently high or impaired and you're driving right now. Very honestly, my personal opinion is, the law that was written to allow this was not, a good job was not, it was not a well-written law. But until you give the police department the tools to tell if someone is impaired, like they can do now with alcohol, you're going to create a mess. And it's going to be a lot of finger pointing. And whether someone ingested or smoked something in the 30 to 45 days has no bearing, or may not have a bearing, on whether they're impaired and having that problem. Until that issue's resolved, I don't think this is a good idea. And I understand the young man who spoke earlier about his anxiety and everything else. I absolutely get it. And I can see, and having gone through the potential for my wife with chemo, I understand why that gets prescribed to people. But I don't think this is the right thing for us to do right now and have some real concerns. Happy to be proven wrong, but in talking to my substance abuse professional, which is a medical review doctor that we have to go to for our testing, there was not a test available as of last week. So I'm pretty confident it hasn't happened in the last six days. Even with adding Thanksgiving in, I don't think that would work. So thanks for your time. Good to see you guys.
Thank you. We have some that were sent in that we are going to read. So if you guys would like to, we're going to read them into the record. And I'm going to start, and then each of us will have a few to read. This is from Peter Arango, 26 Woodlot Road. "We have recently moved back to Connecticut from Southern Oregon, where the cannabis industry essentially invaded the region, forcing small agricultural enterprises to sell and jamming small towns with dispensaries on every corner. We saw villages that sought the bounty from tax dispensaries attract customers from the towns that had not offered permits. In a state experience drought, the cannabis industry took an overwhelming amount of water seasonally. I support the retail sale of cannabis out by the airport in Simsbury. I would rather get the tax benefit in town rather than in Granby, Canton, or other surrounding towns. Thank you, Cynthia Carey, 36 Old Milk Court. We are writing to express our strong support for permitting retail sales of cannabis in Simsbury. The benefits to our town and community include not only increased tax revenue, but also increased traffic to a variety of our businesses, such as gas stations, convenience stores, and restaurants as customers come to town. These customers will have little impact upon our infrastructure but will infuse much-needed cash into the local economy. Why should we let another nearby community reap these advantages? We are confident that the town of Simsbury can find an appropriate site for completely legal retail cannabis sales and that the potential benefits far outweigh any disadvantages. Thank you, sincerely Nancy and Jeff Dornenberg, 225 Old Farms Road." Okay. Heather?
I'm a 32-year resident, co-owner of Weldon Hardware and the Weldon Building and Town Center. I wanted to submit my comments regarding the zoning tax amendments for recreational sale cannabis. I was unable to attend the November 2nd, 2022 Zoning Commission public hearing, but was able to watch the meeting via the SCTV recording the next day. I was unable to hear most of the public comments due to the lack of protocol for residents to approach the podium for their opinions. So I apologize if I am repeating some concerns. First, as a resident, business owner, and mixed-use property owner, I feel like there has been very little notice for public discussion during the first 12 months once the state gave towns the option to sell recreational cannabis. I realize there have been a lot of issues on the zoning commission to approve, that this topic should be front and center to all residents of Simsbury to express their opinions for the next few months. One meeting should not be the end-all for this very sensitive topic. Will this be brought to referendum for residents to vote upon? I believe our town missed the opportunity within November 8th election cycle to allow all residents to vote on the sensitive topic. Second, I believe we need additional law enforcement staff to keep our town safe for residents, businesses, and visitors. With the current climate of obtaining and retaining police officers, what would be the actual feasibility of hiring more officers? What would be the true cost of adding one to two more officers? Has the police commission, chief of police, or any other similar staff been asked their professional opinion on this issue? Third, on the same thought, have there been any studies made on the traffic effects to our town? I realize that no specific sites have been presented as of yet, but our town already has some existing traffic issues, and this question needs to be addressed well in advance before allowing a retail establishment. And what would those costs be if there are needed infrastructure improvements? Fourth, I have done some research on where the state of Connecticut allows the towns to use the taxes for these sales, which I believe have not been very well distributed to town staff commissions and the general public. I initially thought it could bring in a lot of money and used for any town expenses. But after reading SB 1201, I found out that Simsbury would only get a 3% tax off the sales and would be restricted for the following purposes. Number one, streetscape improvements and other neighborhood developments in communities where cannabis retailers, hybrid retailers, or micro-cultivators are located. Number two, education programs or youth employment and training programs in the municipality. Number three, services for individuals living in the municipality who were released from DOC custody, probation, or parole. Number four, mental health or addiction services. Number five, youth service bureaus and municipal juvenile review boards. And number six, community civic engagement efforts. I believe it would be in Simsbury's best interest to get direct feedback from Massachusetts town, parentheses, similar in demographics, and their experience about the pros and cons of allowing recreational cannabis to be sold. I have several questions I believe the zoning commission needs to ask and get detailed answers. What are the crime rates before and after a store's opening? Since this is a cash-only business, what type of security is expected at a retail establishment? Does Simsbury have any projected income estimates on what these taxes would generate? How would these funds be spent? What would be other expenses that Simsbury would incur from the general fund in order to accommodate this type of business? These are questions that need to be answered before a yea or nay vote is presented to any boards. Thank you for your time in reading my concerns and questions. Please feel free to contact me directly if you'd like to discuss further. And this is from Melissa Brett, 77 Seminary Road.
Hello, my name is Lisa Gray, and I reside at 120 Old Canal Way, Weetaw. I'd like to offer you some additional things to think about while considering allowing the sale of recreational marijuana within our town that you may not be aware of. Many of my statements come directly from a book written by a former presidential drug policy advisor and now co-founder with former U.S. Representative Patrick Kennedy of an organization called Smart Approaches to Marijuana, Kevin Sabit. The name of the book is Smoke Screen: What the Marijuana Industry Doesn't Want You to Know. Today, there are more than 10 times as many daily users of marijuana than there were when Bill Clinton was president. There also has been a major jump in marijuana hospitalizations and drugged driving fatalities, as well as demonstrated links between THC and psychosis, schizophrenia, suicide, and depression. Today's marijuana isn't anything like it used to be. It can be up to 99% potent, and no one knows the effect this can have on the brain. The British Medical Journal, The Lancet, recently published research indicating regular users of today's highly potent marijuana are five times more likely than non-used users to develop psychosis. Manufacturers of legalized recreational marijuana are packaging and spinning weed into countless other forms. Gummy bears and lollipops are now being sold with unprecedented levels of THC, all the while luring new and younger users. They're enticing them with cookies, sodas, wax, butter, dabs, and cheddar. If you've never heard of those last three, don't worry, you're not alone. But trust me, the youth of Simsbury know what they are. Research shows marijuana use among youth can lead to a permanent eight-point drop in IQ, as well as a significant increase in the risk of schizophrenia and suicidal thoughts. Since pot was legalized in Colorado, the state has continued to see increases in youth suicide, coinciding with an increase in marijuana, which far outweighs alcohol showing up in their toxicology reports. You may be thinking, but we're not talking about making cannabis available to youth. Well, we all know how well that train of thought has worked with cigarettes and alcohol. If marijuana is made more readily available, it will get into the hands of our younger residents. Just a few weeks ago, a 16-year-old Simsbury resident was taken to the hospital by ambulance after smoking marijuana with a friend. Would it surprise you to learn that no one in the states where pot is now legal has a clear idea of what precisely people are smoking, ingesting, vaping, and otherwise consuming? That today's regulated marijuana often contains mold, pesticides, bacteria, and other additives? That some of the state agencies charged with oversight are woefully understaffed, like so many other employers today? And that so-called state inspectors often miss key safety issues? In some areas, known drug dealers have been granted licenses and are now operating in the legal market while continuing their illegal work. There's a naive public assumption that with legalization and the introduction of government licensing and oversight, illegal activity has curtailed and recreational marijuana is safer. A century ago, dangerous substances were marketed to look and sound completely benign. Doctors were featured in advertisements. Doctors were featured in advertisements, including one which peddled asthma cigarettes without blinking an eye. We can laugh at these advertisements now, but we know Americans were duped by the tobacco industry for decades. As The Economist recently suggested, while lab animals are an expensive way of understanding the risks of cannabis use, Americans come free. I've heard many people say, well, alcohol is legal, why shouldn't marijuana be legalized? Humans have been consuming alcohol for more than 5,000 years. Most people who drink today are part of that cultural continuum, making efforts to prohibit alcohol futile. By contrast, we don't have the same centuries-long ingrained history with marijuana. Most people do not use and have never used drugs, and the laws reflect that. If properly applied, laws can deter and stop mass normalization of pot before it ever goes the way of alcohol. Did you know that during the brief period of alcohol prohibition from 1920 to 1933, diseases such as cirrhosis of the liver dramatically declined in prevalence, and that tens of thousands of lives have been saved since 1984, when Congress upped the national minimum drinking age to 21? These are not reasons to prohibit alcohol because it is so ubiquitous, but these examples prove that access and availability are key factors of use with any substance prone to misuse. I don't care if any adult smokes a joint and falls asleep on their couch, and this isn't about sick people seeking some relief from their pain. But why is a town, should we rush headlong into allowing highly potent THC products to be sold without truly understanding the consequences? Some may say, well, it's legal. Simsbury residents are just going to go to the next town and buy it anyway. That's fine, let them. There are plenty of other legal businesses in Connecticut, like adult bookstores, that are not within our town limits.
Thank you. Chris, do you want to read yours?
Sylvia Ho, this letter is from Sylvia Ho, 6 Sagamore Drive, to the Board of Selectmen. I'm writing to place my comments on the record to be read by the Simsbury Board of Selectmen hearing on November 28th concerning whether to permit or prohibit the retail sale of cannabis in Simsbury. I'm writing because I expect there will be many comments. I would urge the board to prohibit the retail sales of cannabis in Simsbury. Yes, cannabis is legal. I voted in favor of its legalization. It has many benefits for people, especially for medical and mental health reasons, but I do not think it should be permitted to be sold in a retail setting within our community. While cannabis is legal for recreational use for adults, we are a community of families in Simsbury. As a parent first and foremost, I'm concerned about our adolescents. I'm afraid that cannabis, like alcohol and cigarettes, will be seen by them as something that can easily buy and use. I'm afraid of the impact that the open availability of a recreational drug will have on our youth. According to the National Institute on Drug Abuse at the USNIH, some research suggests that marijuana use is likely to precede other illicit and illicit substances and the development of addiction to the substances. A longitudinal study from the National Epidemiological Study of Alcohol Use and Related Disorders found that adults who reported marijuana use were more likely than those who did not use marijuana to develop alcohol disorders, and people who already had alcohol disorders worsened with use of marijuana. A link to the NIH's research report on cannabis is linked here. A study on the effects of cannabis on school and work can be accessed here. There are many products that are legal to sell, but wise not to sell in a multi-generational residential community. For instance, we do not have a porn shop. We do not have gun shops. We do not have theaters that show porn movies. We should not have a cannabis shop either. Thank you for your consideration.
So this next one is John Ravique, 318 Old Farms Way. Regarding the question of allowing or prohibiting a cannabis dispensary in Simsbury, it is inevitable that cannabis will be removed from the federal Schedule 1 Control Substance List. And since the product is no more harmful than alcohol or cigarettes, it is simply logical to regulate in a similar fashion to those products. Additionally, choosing to deny dispensary will not prevent the availability or use of the product. It will merely cause either further travel to nearby states, towns, and thereby increase traffic or create, expand, and black market. Controlling the access for citizens less than the average age will be the same whether or not there is a dispensary that is local. In summary, because of the amount of cannabis available to citizens in Simsbury, it will be unaffected by the presence or non-presence of a dispensary in town. The product will soon be removed from federal control, and the health and social harm are no different, perhaps less harmful, than the already accepted products of alcohol and tobacco. It is simply logical to allow the dispensaries and obtain the tax benefits.
Robert Rothenberg, 126 Hot Meadow Street, 7H. I would support a marijuana dispensary. I'm Simsbury, in Simsbury, I believe is what he meant. I am a family physician and have witnessed the benefits many times over. And the next one is, hello, my name is Morgan Murphy, Senior Compliance Manager for Cure Leaf, Connecticut. I'm reaching out to provide our public comment on permitting the retail sales of cannabis in the town of Simsbury. As a current cannabis producer in Simsbury, we are a strong promoter of permitting retail sales. We can attest to the peace and happiness we have been able to maintain in the four communities where our current retail facilities reside, and we are confident in our ability to do the same in Simsbury if given the opportunity. Due to the extensive security regulations provided by the Department of Consumer Protection, we can guarantee through security measures will be followed. Lawyer-ing on the retail property would not be permitted, and we would be able to provide the town of Simsbury with a plethora of employment opportunities as we could be considered one of the larger retail employers to exist within the town lines. If the town has any additional questions or comments regarding safe access to medicinal and adult-use cannabis within your jurisdiction, do not hesitate to contact me directly. We look forward to hearing your determination on this matter. And this is regards, Morgan Murphy, 34 Hot Meadow Street, Cure Leaf. Thank you. Okay, so what we normally will do is close the public hearing and ask for a motion. And as a, I could just take a little liberty here and just kind of summarize a couple of things. We all know cannabis is legal in Connecticut. That's not going to change. This has started with our zoning commission last year. It has recently come to the Board of Selectmen as a body to have oversight to this. And we've gone through a couple of new boards through this process and new staff. So we are kind of just looking at it for the first time at the board level here. I've talked to Maria, and we are going to try to get facts based on a lot of the comments that we've heard tonight. Increased PD, traffic, the impact on students and schools. We do have resources we can check on that. So we are going to look into data. I can't give you an answer on the next step here because I don't know what that is. But we have zoning permission, we have our board, and the referendum option we need to discuss with the legal counsel. That is only able to be handled by a petition, which Tommy mentioned. But as far as when that could happen, what elections it can be tied to, I don't have the answer right now. We had first heard that it was going to be tied potentially to a midterm or a presidential election, and I'm not sure that's true. So more to come on that. I think you'll have to trust us to do our homework and find the best route forward. With that, I am going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Cool, if you close a public hearing, then how do we get data back from you? We can do a presentation.
We're not bound by public hearing to cover all of the issue.
And that's, yeah, I mean, people can vote against not closing the public hearing.
This is not a zoning matter, so we can't talk about the issue.
So we have a motion, we have a motion to close the public hearing.
We shouldn't be taking comment from the public.
No, Madam First Selectman, I do have a question for clarification from point of order just before we close this discussion on the comments you made. Not as a challenge, but just for clarification, Maria. I think there is a dispute, there is confusion, possibly caused by myself as well. Yeah, I take full responsibility. Is that possible? But if the zoning, and I appreciate the need for us to continue to push forward a conversation that is fact-based on, to support the interests of all parties. But if the zoning board takes action before we were to take action, that, and a application, in the affirmative, let's say, in the affirmative, and an application was submitted for a retail cannabis establishment, no action by us could stop that, that retail establishment moving forward. Is that correct, Maria?
That's my understanding.
So what I'm asking for is to make sure that we sync with our friends and our teammate members on the zoning board so that they do not take an action, which would prevent us from allowing for this conversation to continue to its fullest, to learn, to answer all of our questions, just for one question.
I agree, I agree with that.
So that'd be a conversation that should take place for clarity with Chairman Ryan and the team.
Yeah, I would ask for, if I could, I would ask for a clarification on the legal opinion we already received because we were told by counsel that we would supersede a zoning decision. If zoning allowed, we could ban therefore superseding the decision. So if that in fact is not an accurate legal opinion.
As long as there's not the...
So I would like a legal opinion.
Sure.
Written down for Bob D on that because now I've heard something different.
Right, I think what Chris was just saying is that if zoning were to proceed prior to a prohibition coming from this board and an application was pending under the regulatory process, under the land use process, and was approved prior to any prohibition occurring from that board, my understanding is that entity would essentially be grandfathered. And I think that was the point that Chris was trying to make.
That's what we were told.
Yeah, we can certainly get that clarification from Bob. Yeah.
Is there a question from public or both?
No, no.
We still do have them.
So I just wanted to clarify, so just make sure that we're syncing in the conversation.
Yeah, so we're reaching out to have that conversation amongst the boards, actually, with the attorney, the town attorney.
I also would like clarification on, it was my understanding from the zoning meeting that the six-month moratorium is not necessarily going to be a full six months. It's going to be for the amount of time that it takes for them to put their tax amendments in place. And so that's also a concern if we drag our fee as a board. So I think we need to address that as well.
Yeah, and to that, we cannot enable, we can only prohibit it, right? The law, the law, the law, and it's, right? So it is legal. Zoning has put a stop to it by virtue of moratorium. But the law says that there can be an establishment. If zoning chooses not to pass a firm of moratorium and does not regulate, it will be by right, correct? So it is legal unless either zoning specifically comes in and regulates or says that it will not be allowed. We can then choose to only restrict. Now, back to the referendum comment. We saw 3,000 people sign a referendum, sign a petition for metalwork.
Was it closer to 1,400?
It was, it was large.
4,000 people got outside and petitioned, just spent $2 million to save a piece of land in this community. I would think that this issue would be very easy for some motivated folks, either for or against, to go get 10% and put this on the ballot. I struggle with understanding why that would be a challenge for folks that are so passionate about this.
I agree.
I think, because I heard a lot of comments tonight about referendum. I think if there is that level of passion for it, then folks should follow the statute, right? And these questions are very specific about what can or cannot be on the ballot. And I agree with the timing comments, but if folks are that thoughtful and that passionate about it, there is a very easy mechanism to put it on the ballot. We've seen those petitions be gathered in what, 36 hours, 48 hours? 4,000, so you're sure?
Yeah, we got those quickly.
Yep.
You know, I think the concern, I would imagine, is the timing of, between the time to get something on a referendum and then are there already establishments grandfathered? And so, and with us taking an action, I think that's why it's potentially important for us to take more love, to allow it to go.
Yeah, one comment I found at the state level, I think there's, the state has to reach a certain amount of volume before they actually can issue the permits, and they're getting close to that. They project that that will happen in early 2023. Right now, there's seven to eight, I don't have it in front of me, approved licenses by the state. So there's still a process that has to happen, I think, to get into that, to that group. But that's, the state has said that they're not yet issuing licenses at this point in time.
Sure, I can. And just for some additional clarity, we had taken a look at the issue if we were to receive a petition with sufficient signatures. And I will get clarity on this, and I'm looking at Melissa's and hoping her memory may be better on this than mine. But I do, I do believe that when we looked at this with the town attorney, that should we receive a petition, the way that the statute was written, it would then proceed to essentially an election ballot, not a local referendum ballot. And again, that went back to the statutory language. But again, we can, okay, thank you. We'll double-check that, but that is our memory on that.
So to be clear, if that were to happen, it would trigger the 2023 municipal vote, and then it would show up?
Correct. Yeah, that's correct.
We could probably take some action to make sure nothing happens until the referendum, if that's happening.
That's where they're syncing up with zoning.
It's syncing the zoning.
Yep. So there's a motion on the table to close the public hearing. Someone want to second that?
So moved. Second, so moved.
Okay. And is there any discussion, further discussion?
I guess I just wanted to make sure people here know that, you know, this doesn't end the conversation. We have public audience before all of our meetings. You're welcome to come anytime. If there are questions that you have that weren't raised tonight, I encourage you to reach out to any of us and all of us. And, you know, I look forward to, you know, the research that we can do, both from states that have been doing this for 10-plus years and our neighbors to the north in Massachusetts. And any information that's shared with us will be shared with the public through our meeting packets and other channels that we have. So thank you all for coming tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, so is that all discussions? So all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you.
People entering and exiting Town Hall parking lot. Have to walk on a parking lot that has many cracks and uneven surfaces since it hasn't been maintained in years. People entering and exiting Town Hall lot. Yeah, leaving Town Hall after sunset. The parking lot is in complete darkness with no visibility since there are no lights on the parking lot, placing people in danger as the sun falls. A Town representatives must be aware of this liability since they too use the parking lot but don't care. Money goes to everything but maintenance. Receiving job opportunities in town appears the town is short-staffed in most departments, leading many tasks either ignored and neglected, leading to poor service to the taxpayers that support the staff. Town manager Maria Capriola has a reputation for creating a toxic workforce with many eligible people not interested in applying for jobs in Simsbury. An article in the Harvard Current discussing Simsbury State's quote, "complaints, claims, bad morale, favoritism, and exodus of staff," end quote. The planning department has been in chaos since Town manager Maria Capriola hired Janelle Mullin as co-compliance officer. Janelle Mullin bolted after a few months after investigation of the department with Town manager Maria Capriola hiring an attorney with leading questions to the staff that result in the termination of Robin Newton, a highly professional employee in the planning department. With the departure of the town planner, Town manager Maria Capriola chose a less qualified person to head the department against the recommendation of the interviewers. George, the governor directory, a director of government of community and planning and development, appears to have little knowledge of Simsbury and various state regulations that are required to support boards and commissions. The planning department is now in crisis mode. An assistant town planner was chosen by Town manager Maria Capriola over town's co-compliance officer who applied for the job. The assistant town planner has submitted her resignation after a few short months leaving the co-compliance officer, who is now acting as support to the town planner in violation of the union contract, leaving a skeleton staff. The co-compliance officer is currently on vacation with only two people left to run a department that should have at least four employees staffing the department. The issue is, this issue is due to the Town manager Maria Capriola's inability to hire quality staff that is knowledgeable, will support the boards and commissions, the business community, and residents require professional advice. After many executive sessions discussing the performance of Town manager Maria Capriola, the Board of Selectmen have not presented their conclusions in open session. The police department has hired several of public safety solutions to investigate the management of the department with a focus on resources and all other issues. As listed in their website, the circus mission is to provide practical solutions to public safety organizations to achieve efficiency, transparency, and accountability in a cost-effective, reliable way. After a lengthy review, the findings should be made public and a plan to improve the police department should be implemented. The past history of the department, the firing of an exemplary sergeant, an MOU information given Town manager Maria Capriola many of the designated tasks by the police commission by state law, a police commission resigning... commission by state law, a police commission resigning to a, to a, violation of the rule of law, and no confidence vote against Chief Volter, there is much to review with an outside consultant. Another lobbying group, the cyclists, wants the town to add ordinance to the town that allows bicycles on town sidewalks. They're called sidewalks, not multi-use spaces, and they're constructed to have walkers, not bicyclists, mainly with walkers. Walkers are all ages, some with disabilities, will be challenged by space on narrow sidewalks. People with walkers and strollers use the sidewalk. Many children that are walkers to go to school use sidewalks for safety. Many people walk their dogs on sidewalks that could be aggressive with the bicyclists in their path. At the present time, many of the bicyclists on the roads do not stop at stop signs as they were required by state law. If the bicyclists can't follow state law, why should anyone believe that this ordinance would regulate their conduct? This is an accident waiting to happen in ecosystem with the space on sidewalks. Town manager Maria Capriola and the Board of Selectmen should not even entertain the absurd ordinance that a self-serving cycling group is promoting. All my comments will be posted on some bird bag, Twitter at Joan Coe, Facebook, and there are also twelve towns that ban the use of sale of marijuana and cannabis in the, so I just want you to know, twelve towns decided they would ban it, I suggest you follow their lead. Thank you.
Thank you for the rehash of items. I did want to comment, I not usually don't comment here, but I'm talking tonight, for sharing the information about the assistant town planner without any facts behind it. We were starting to lose, we lose our assistant town planner. It has nothing to do with any sort of innuendo or hearsay as to why she left, and she spoke very, very highly of Maria Capriola when I met her at the recent planning forum, and she is going through a very personal issue. So please make sure that that does not change in the changing of how you present it. And the performance appraisal is being worked on, so be here on December 12th. Thank you. Sorry about that, everyone else. Want to say that. The first selectman's report, I think it's time for the first selectman's report, I don't really have one. Simsbury celebrates was great. The Latimer Lane referendum date will be decided this week. Cannabis, we all have been talking about cannabis, and I do want to plug the Connecticut Wales first home game at the I S C State on December ninth at seven o'clock, and it should be a fun night, and everybody should go. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our town attorney.
Great, thank you Wendy, good evening everyone. I rarely, in my manager's report, respond to public comment, but also feel the need this evening to just factually state that I am incredibly pleased with the performance of our planning director. He is highly qualified, incredibly talented, he's a wonderful mentor, and he's building a great team and doing really good work for us. But a lot of, I think, factual inaccuracies were said, and just really wanted to state that for the record. All right, and jumping into my report. For Board of Selectmen Business, just a couple of quick reminders, because I know we have a very, very busy week, but we do have the Board of Finance public hearing tomorrow evening. They will be taking public feedback on the potential referendum and supplemental appropriation for the Latimer Lane renovation, as well as a number of grants for various infrastructure projects that we've received, which we'll be covering later in your meeting this evening. That will be here in person at the library. I say here, but it's actually in the Terrafell Room, so just down the hallway, but here at the library at 5:30 tomorrow evening. And we also, in the event that, following that public hearing, that the Board of Finance recommends advancing that to referendum, very similar to our budget process, you would then have a subsequent meeting, that would be on Wednesday night, virtual only, to set the referendum date and to approve the various capital resolutions, which you received a copy of today. Just a couple of quick items under Department News and Notes. We really wanted to thank the board and ultimately our Board of Finance and really the voters for the technology infrastructure investments that we have begun to make, and that was with the fiscal 2122 budget. And we have, as you know, put our various technology on replacement schedules, including the public terminals here at the library, which are just so heavily used by the public. And we recently just completed a complete upgrade of the public terminals on the upper level of the library. So it's just a really wonderful accomplishment, and again, really want to thank the board for your investment in that infrastructure. And just another quick note, the library will be having a delayed opening on Thursday, December 8th. The library staff will be engaging in professional development that day as an entire team, so there will just be a slight delayed opening of 1:30 on the 8th. And from our planning department, just a quick reminder that the P O C D, that's the Plan of Conservation and Development, the survey that will be part of updating that document is now open. We do have the link available on the report, and the survey will be open until January 1st. If we do have folks who need a hard copy, the planning department does have those available at our offices at Town Hall. And lastly, an announcement from Public Works, Jonathan Carnaval has begun work today with our Highway Division as a truck driver. We're really glad to have him join the team. He has previous municipal experience. And also had many years of driving tractor-trailer as well as snowplowing experience, so a lot of really good relevant skills, especially as we're heading into our snowplowing season. So welcome to John, I'm really glad to have him. Thank you.
Okay, how about some selectman liaison and committee reports? Anybody? I'll start with the other.
I would like to thank everybody that has donated to the Simsbury Food Pantry. We made an appeal a couple of weeks ago to try to get donations of non-perishables and household cleaning products and paper products, and the town really responded. The bin at the food pantry was completely full, and there was items stacked on top of the bin. So we made a special trip and got everything unloaded, so the bin is emptied. And I would also say, you know, we will continue to take donations throughout the holiday season, and there's also other ways that you can help, Community and Social Services, where you can make a donation directly to social services that can be used for the Director's Discretionary Fund, which can help play, help pay for costs of living and rent for people that are struggling. Last year, the Social Services provided $22,000 in assistance for that. And there's also the annual drive for holiday gifts for children. Last year, there were 92 children that received gifts and toys through this program. So if you're interested in helping to provide some holiday gifts for children, or providing funds for people that are trying to make ends meet during the holiday season, please contact Kristin Formanak at Social Services, or call them directly.
Thank you. Did you have something else?
Oh, just the P O C D update. Also, the library has a hat and mittens tree that's up as well, where they're collecting donations, so new ones, just to clarify.
Yeah, as you know, this board, or maybe been a previous board, set aside $22,000 for data collection effort for the D E I Council. I appreciate it being part of the interview process where we talked to a couple of consultants. The organization that we settled on was Data Haven, which is well-known to the town and well-known across the state in this space. What I think set them apart, and what I'm excited about, is, you know, ultimately coming out of this, there's going to be a quantitative data collection, a small qualitative data collection piece, with then ultimately recommendations for areas of focus, possible policy areas, again, all around making our town a more welcoming place. And this is an organization that is as well-plugged in to this work as any organization is. So I have no doubt that we'll get recommendations that are going to be unique to Simsbury, but also informed by, you know, what we know has been successful elsewhere.
Just a good one. First of all, Leonard and I, along with the town manager, have a, I could say, formulary conversation coming up with S V A A to discuss the results of the staffing of the second ambulance and the financial model that goes with it. We knew all, we knew all along that that was a challenged financial model for them, and they needed to work it out from a time, so not a promise to fund, not a promise not to fund, but, and I think, an initial conversation to figure out what the next steps might be, what this board might need from a data standpoint or a discussion standpoint, if we decide to or not decide to entertain funding with that organization as we move into the next budget. There's also a public safety meeting coming up the 16th, I believe?
Soon.
Yeah.
Fifteen or sixteen.
Fifteen, sixteen, the third Thursday of the month.
Yes.
So, I will, I'll have a say on that. I have no Irish, no Irish one in this one, but. But if folks would like to come, I, one of the items on the agenda for that is going to be, I think, a continued discussion of the sidewalk petition that we've all, or excuse me, not the sidewalk, the crosswalk petition that we've seen from our friends and residents over by the Gris Mill in the apartments, and the safety challenges folks are having crossing West Street with the unlighted, unsigned crosswalk that's on that state road. So acknowledging that it is a state road, and there's very little we can do as a municipal jurisdiction, but still making sure that we're talking about that, and if there are opportunities to talk to our state friends, perhaps Representative-elect Osborne would be, would be interested in that information as well.
And as a segue, I was going to just mention the finance subcommittee meeting that we have this coming Thursday. We're trying to finalize the business grant program, but we also had mentioned at the last meeting that we're pre-screening some asks for the budget, and we've asked S C T B to film it so that if there's any information there that's relevant to the budget, we don't, if you can see it, everyone can hear it there, too. And part of that is another ask for S V A A, which would also, I would assume, will all be considered up the budget. So I think that's it for liaison reports. Before we get into selectman action, I have to ask to amend, motion to amend the agenda to move, let me try to put this right, item C, which discusses the bleacher project, to after E, so that we do the, the motions first, is that correct? Okay.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, tricky one tonight. Okay, so.
Keep the letters right.
Pardon me?
Keep the letters right.
I don't know, I'm kind of now. Okay, so now we get into our, probably our simplest item of the night is the tax refund request, and I'm going to ask for a motion effective November 28th, 2022, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $2,549.90 and to authorize town manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds.
Oh.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, but next, I know we have a lot of Board of Ed business here tonight, and we have a lot of Board of Ed people here tonight. This one is on the collective bargaining grant, and I will not be weighing in on this, and I will turn this over to the professionals who have worked on this. Maria, Neil, however you want to handle this.
Sure, I'll start with.
Yeah, why don't you start?
Okay, and then I'll see if Neil wants to add. So for those of you who have been on the board for a bit of time, you probably recall seeing this, for our new members, essentially under statute, once a tentative agreement between the parties of the Board of Ed and the teachers' union, once that has been reached, ultimately, it does come to the Board of Selectmen for final ratification. You know, we provided a summary to you all, as was the case with our own municipal contracts. This contract was negotiated in good faith, therefore I would recommend your ratification of their work. And I do also just really want to thank the Board of Education. I think over the last few years, we've established a very good working relationship and have done a very comprehensive collaborative benefit strategy that we're working on as a team, and really want to thank the board for their work on advancing those benefit strategies through their negotiations, which again, you will see is very comparable to what we recently approved for our municipal contracts. And, you know, I don't know if you have anything that you'd like to add?
Yeah, just a couple other comments about a process that in terms of, little different than other Board of Ed or municipal negotiations, where with the teachers and administrators, there's actually statutorily driven deadlines for when you have to enter mediation and when you have to go to binding arbitration. They're all figured out by when, we use the second Tuesday in May as your probable referendum date most years, and then it counts backwards from there about, and it's basically for municipalities, given that this is the largest expense in most towns in teachers' contract, that they want it settled before you enter budget season. So that is, that is why it happens in the fall, leading into before next July 1st. The settlement itself is slightly below the state average, which is higher than it's been in previous seasons, not surprising that in an inflationary period, that the settlements have been coming in higher. So over a three-year length of this contract, it's just below 12%, slightly below where the state averages are coming in as compared to three years ago, where it was 10% over three years. Again, that one was slightly below state average. So we are represented by shipment and Goodwin through the entire process, and we are represented by the lead attorney of their school-based practice, Tom Wooni. So we are extraordinarily, extraordinarily well-represented. And I will also add that our board members started this process, while staff handles most negotiations, our four, our four board members who are on the Personnel and Negotiations Subcommittee put in a lot of work during the teacher negotiations, because they're with us the whole, the whole way through, from the beginning to what was a very late night of mediation. So I want to thank those numbers, Jeff Tindall, Todd Buick, Brian Watson, and Lydia Tadone for their help in this process, as well as our superintendent, Matt Curtis. We think it's a fair settlement. It was ratified by their membership on November 14th and by our board on November 15th. So thus it comes to you for potential action or non-action. The only thing that we would have to worry about is if you rejected the proposal, we would be subject to binding arbitration. So you can take that for what it's, for what it is.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion, I'm going to ask for the motion, to move effective November 28th, 2022, to approve the three-year collective bargaining agreement between the Simsbury Board of Education and the Simsbury Education Association, as approved at the November 15th, 2022 Board of Education.
So moved.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
I said thank you for the work.
Okay, good discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let me see if I have this right here, hold on. So I'm going to authorize, the next item is the item, the new item C, authorize the Board of Ed to apply for a Connecticut indoor air quality command. I think we talked about this a little bit, because the high school was too late for this, I'm not sure where we had that, but if you'd like to provide some context here, that would be great.
Sure, so this was a competitive grant opportunity that came to our attention this fall. It was opened up this fall. The application deadline is coming up on December 1st. Our understanding is that eligible HVAC and air quality-related projects would be eligible for 80% reimbursement from the state with a 20% local match. I want to thank the Board of Education for taking a look at potential upcoming municipal projects that may have qualified for this grant program. There is a potential project at Squadron Line that we do believe would potentially qualify for this particular grant program. Unfortunately, the high school project is not eligible, but we did inquire and look into that. And if we were to be awarded this grant, a potential funding source would be their C and R program. So there are three motions that are very specific, that are required by the state as part of the grant application process. It's somewhat similar in nature to when we apply for the school construction grants, whether it's for Latimer or Henry James. So if you are in support of submitting a grant application this evening, we would just need those three motions that are provided in your packet. I don't know, Jason, if you have anything you might like to add?
Wow, you went through just about every bullet I had. I would just add that the grant is very specific about what projects are available for this, and we went through, and really, it's that Squadron Line piece, it was, it was a year project for us, but the ventilation system is essentially original to the building, so about 50 years old, and this is a way that we can reduce the humidity in that building and improve the air quality.
Is this, just a quick question, does town staff work on this, or is this all contracted work to do the schematics and all that, on the specs?
Yeah, it would largely be contracted, that's for sure.
Okay. Curious.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Were the other elementary schools not candidates for the grant?
Yes, one of the issues with the grant is unless there's been demonstrated reports of air quality issues, it looks at when the last time we received funding on these types of projects, so they don't like to go back within a 20-year period if there's already been worked up.
Okay, so I'm going to read, ask for the following three motions that are in order. Okay, so I'm going to read, ask for the following three motions that are in order. Move effective November 28, 2022, that the Board of Selectmen authorize the Town of Simsbury Board of Ed to apply to the Commissioner of Education and to accept or reject a grant for the Squadron Line Elementary School Air Quality Improvement Project. Move effective November 28, that the Board of Selectmen hereby establishes the Permanent Public Building Committee as the building committee to the proposed Squadron Line Elementary School Air Quality Improvement Project. And move effective November 28, 2022, that the Board of Selectmen authorizes the preparation of schematic drawings and outlined specifications for the proposed Squadron Line Elementary School Air Quality Improvement Project.
Move those.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So move that one along.
We're going to get in trouble for that supplemental.
If we get it, when's it coming? Oh, well, depends on when we get it, right? That's what I was wondering too, but, okay. So now we're going to the, sorry, don't, give me a minute here, people. The amend the motions adopted, right? The old item-
I'm waiting for this one. I would love to know how we're going to amend motions that were approved.
Oh, okay.
Can't wait for the lawyers to tell me this.
So we're going to amend motions that were approved, adopted July 11th and August 8th regarding various sidewalk and multi-use path infrastructure appropriations. We have Maria, Amy, Adam, Tom, many people to speak to this for us tonight.
Yeah, great. And I think what might help guide the conversation a bit, you'll probably see me referring back to page 21 of your packet, where we provided a summary of various grants that we either have received since the conclusion of our budget process, or again, because of the inflationary environment we're in, a number of our previously approved grants and infrastructure projects, the costs have escalated, and the granting agencies are making up the difference of that cost increase. So since, again, since our budget process had concluded, if you look to that highlighted bolded box amount requiring appropriation at referendum, you'll see that we've received just under $4 million in grant revenue for infrastructure projects. Again, several were established in previous capital budgets. And then in particular, the Firetown Road sidewalk application, you all probably recall, because under our charter, before we can even apply for the grants, we come to you for permission to apply. So this is a good problem to have, in that we have received nearly $4 million in grant dollars for these infrastructure projects. These were, again, approved projects and/or, as in the Firetown Road project, a key project that was identified in our BI-PED master plan. The challenge that we have is under our charter, if overall our supplemental appropriations are in excess of 3%, we are supposed to go back to the voters. My understanding is that in the past, perhaps grants were not included in that, but we did consult with bond counsel and the town attorney, who felt that it was important to err on the side of caution, and since that language does not exclude grants and donations from the 3%, that it would be prudent to go back to referendum and seek approval of the appropriation of these grant dollars. We do have Bob Isaw, who just joined us, and I'm not sure Melissa, what word, Glenn Counselor? And bond counsel is here as well, we have Glenn and Judith on as well. So perhaps Glenn, Judith, Bob, I don't know which of you might like to take the lead in sort of explaining your opinion and thoughts on this 3% issue.
Well, I'll start and then you can jump in. You know, the, the language of the charter really doesn't distinguish between appropriations of property tax revenues and grant revenues, the language is, is the same. So, and I know, I might have missed this, but we had an extraordinary year this year for two reasons. One is the escalated cost of fruition of existing projects, including that Latimer Lane project, that's directly. But secondly is the, is the good problem of having grant opportunities available because of ARPA, and not just ARPA, but also COVID-related funding that's been flowing through the state of Connecticut, which is flowing down the towns, and they couldn't be anticipated at budget time, but they're coming in mid-year. And to take advantage of them, of course, they need to be accepted by the Board of Selectmen and then appropriated according to the charter. And what has happened is, because of the sheer number of those grants for projects, the 3% cap has become relevant much earlier in the fiscal year than it ever has. So what Judith and I and Amy and Maria have looked at is taking some previously approved appropriations under the, under the cap, and then moving them into referendum, thereby replenishing the cap, so to speak.
So Bob, I'm not a smart guy, but what I'm trying to understand is, if we didn't catch this, they were approved, we can build these sidewalks, we can accept these grants, we go on our merit way, right?
Well, the contracts-
We had legal-
The contract couldn't, the contract couldn't be signed because there was not a supporting appropriation.
Until somebody discovered the 3%, we thought there was a supporting appropriation, right?
No, no, we were always on the lookout for the 3% cap.
So it got through two boards. It got through two boards and approved. Got through the Board of Selectmen, got through the Board of Finance.
No, what it did, we weren't up against the cap. What pushed us over the cap, I think, was Latimer Lane.
I respectfully disagree. None of these, these are over the cap without Latimer Lane.
Latimer had to go to referendum because-
3.9, 3.9 mil is over the cap by themselves, Bob. That's what I'm struggling with, is we had two boards approve these, we went on our merit way, and what I'm trying to understand is, are you telling us we have to do this? Or are you telling us this is a good idea to cover ourselves?
What we're suggesting is, by moving them into referendum, you're taking them out from under the cap and allowing yourself room under the cap to proceed through the rest of the fiscal year.
I understand that, but we're now exposing these grants to being rejected by the taxpayers and potentially losing the benefit by putting them in question, which is not in the best interest of the town of Simsbury. So by putting them up for vote, we could actually be harming the town of Simsbury.
Well, what would happen then is the, the projects would have to be scaled back to reduce the costs and reduce the scope of the project to fit within the available appropriation.
Thereby foregoing 3.9 million of grant revenue, right?
Could they wait until the budget?
Yeah, portions of it could wait for the budget. You could change the timing of the projects to have them completed in the, you know, after the beginning of the next fiscal year.
I'm all for following the intent of the charter, but I'm not all for exposing the taxpayers to financial harm for a, candidly, a silly miss in charter language construction. We should have exempted grants from appropriations. This shouldn't even be a question, and I understand we're bound by that. But I'm uncomfortable exposing the taxpayers to $4 million of additional costs in a future year and missing potential grants that made perfect sense on a January referendum where 12 people are going to pay attention and show up.
Is there any way that, I don't know what the referendum language would be, but is it going to be clear in the language that this is grant money? Because I don't-
See how people would understand that this is essentially grant money that is not increasing their taxes. I think people, if they saw it on a referendum, would think that they're approving it, just like they're having to approve an increase in, in costs to Latimer Lane. I don't know how they would make the distinction, or how we could message that in a way that they would understand.
I couldn't agree more with both of your sentiments. I don't see how residents will understand why they're voting on grant money. That will be so, was lost probably when I read the, read this agenda, so I could see how that-
Well, you do have the opportunity to, to publish and to let sort of text that could spell it out.
I agree, Bob. I mean, you've been doing this longer than me, you know how that works. I mean, people have been in there, and the question is such legally easy-worded that nobody understands what the heck of a lot. So I'm kind of lost. Can we focus this back? Okay, so we have, if I'm correct here, we have a, we have a, we have a project that we identified, that we wanted to move forward on, we sought funding for it, the funding was found and approved to go towards that project. What, so, so not debating the value of what you're concerned with, Sean, how do we move from here to here, move this project forward?
I mean, we could take the risk and put it in a referendum.
So we have identified that that's probably not an efficient process. Is that fair enough to say? If we're concerned about the turnout and the understanding and whichever, so what's an alternative to that, so we can move this forward? Or do we just kill it? And then move to a different question cycle?
So if I can, wait, isn't this kind of like a cleanup, just to make good on the charter, that if we were, and I don't know if we do this, keep track of any supplementals that we have throughout the year, and then when we're close to the 3%, we either don't do them, I'm not sure, but the future holds as far as what we do with that, but, or we, you know, you had talked about doing them at the, as a budget if possible, if we can like pre-plan.
We need to address this in the budget, yeah. That's the after action, right? Because then I have a whole list of questions, how did the Board of Finance allow us to exceed the supplemental appropriation? Isn't that what they're for? We've got that, we've got that for sure. We can litigate the process, but I'm trying to, how do we move, how do we move on this issue? That's what I need, somebody tell me.
Sure.
Again, the simple path is to move forward on referendum, but I'm asking, is this advice or is this a requirement? Because we have violated the charter before, and I'm not suggesting we violate it, but that October storm, the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen intentionally violated both of their spending caps to appropriate a contract to clean this town up.
Well, I think we did that under emergency appropriation.
It exceeded your cap at the time, Bob, you'd had, it was way more than 2%. We had to put the emergency appropriation in the charter language after because of that. Everybody held hands and did it together.
Ray, you were beginning to speak about other options, I don't know if you had it.
Yeah, you know, what we had talked about, again, staff and legal counsel, is that a long-term fix would be when we go into our charter revision processes, to definitely identify this as an issue, because I think a reasonable person would say grants, donations, right? It probably was never the intent of that language to find ourselves in this situation.
Fair enough.
So definitely, I think, in terms of a long-term permanent fix, we absolutely need to do a cleanup of that language during our next charter revision. And then, oh gosh, sorry, I lost my train of thought on the other item.
That was preemptively budgeting for grants.
Oh, yes.
The test may be received.
Thank you, right. And so one of the challenges we've also had with two of these items is that oftentimes our competitive grants, I think a good example was the one on the agenda tonight for the HVAC grant. That was something that was literally announced this fall, it hasn't existed previously. So when we're often applying for competitive grants, they often come up off-budget cycle, we have no idea what they might be for, how much they might be covered, so it's often difficult to budget for them until we have really received the grant award. And again, the challenges we had with two of these projects in particular, they were the existing pre-approved projects, so the North End Sidewalk and the Terriffill Bloomfield Multi-Use Path project, is that those projects are underway, and if we were to wait until our ordinary budget process, the construction would be significantly delayed, and we would potentially lose our pricing from the vendors. You know, what you probably are more accustomed to seeing is what I would call the formulaic grants, that are smaller and operating budget in nature, so things that are predictable, we will budget during the budget process. So things such as, you know, the Service Bureau Grant, the Dial-A-Rate Grant, et cetera, those are predictable, formulaic, we budget for them. And what we've typically done, again, with these competitive grants, is that once we've received notice of a grant award, when we can incorporate them with budget process, that is absolutely our preference. And again, I think good examples were the North End Sidewalk and the Terriffill Bloomfield Multi-Use Path. The challenge is, again, what we're seeing now with this inflationary environment, is the cost increases are escalating. The granting agencies, after budget season concluded, have given us the additional, additional fundings to make sure that we can complete these projects, but now we find ourselves in this, in this conundrum, so.
Yeah, I'm not going to vote against the referendum, but my concern is, we are setting ourselves up for potential failure and losing out on revenue that everybody in this community would want. That's, that's what I'm struggling with. And I get the, the legal guidance, but am I being told I have to do this? Or do we actually have a discussion here, Bob, as I get, get what I'm asking? Because let's fast forward, and I'm going to ask you what lawyers hate, is a hypothetical, the voters turn it down, do we do it anyway?
Well, no, you can't sign a contract without a supporting appropriation. You can sign a contract for a reduced scope or a phased project that puts you beyond, you know, July 1st, you could do phase one with available appropriations in the current fiscal year, and then phase two, and after the next budget cycle, we can appropriate the normal course. All the contracts have non-appropriation clauses in them, so if appropriation fails, you know, there's no liability to the town, the town can cancel the contract. Judith, I didn't mean to cut you off, is there anything you want to add to this?
No, no, the only question I would have, I'm not certain that you exceeded the 3% limit at this moment. I believe the issue is that it leaves no room for additional grant appropriations or additional projects to respond to, you know, some of the things that were raised by your citizens tonight, like unsafe conditions and whatnot.
So where are we?
We did reach the limit with these grants.
So just fun fact, how many supplementals have we done this year? That's not true, actually.
We've done the ARPA supplementals.
Those don't count.
Ray, you're on the other end.
So total supplementals. How many of them are grant? How many are ARPA? Which was taken from the budget, didn't discuss.
But it was still supplemental.
Doesn't count.
That one is, there's one.
It does count.
And then the rest were encumbrance cleanups.
Year round.
Year round, carry forwards. So what are the true supplementals? We did Wokeit Road, one.
Wokeit Road, the workers' comp claim settlement. And, how was it? Uh, no, I'm sorry. We're utilizing year round 2022 funds, we did town staffing, finance, parks.
Those are year round cleanups, I mean, we never really called those supplemental. How many supplementals have we had in the prior fiscal year? Hold on, I'm getting there. The dollar figures what matters, not the number. So my point is, to clean up a comment that was made by a Board of Finance member, we are not in an unprecedented number of supplemental transfers. In fact, it's less than the prior fiscal year.
Okay, so-
That matters.
Okay.
Facts matter.
So I'm going to make a motion, I'm going to ask for a motion for the items on the table. I'm going to read them, because there's a lot to read here. Effective November 28, the following motions resolve that the resolution of the Board of Selectmen regarding the Firetown Road sidewalk construction project adopted August 8th, under Selectmen Action, Item I, be amended to read as follows. Resolve that the Board of Selectmen recommends and approves, subject to a referendum vote, the appropriation of a lots of grant in the amount of $1.2 million, and a community connectivity grant program grant the amount of $594 for the aggregate grant appropriation of $1.794 million for the Firetown Road sidewalk construction project. Resolve that the resolution of the Board of Selectmen regarding the North End Sidewalk construction project adopted August 8, 2022, under Selectmen Action, Item I, be amended to read as follows. Resolve that the Board of Selectmen recommends and approves, subject to referendum vote, the appropriation of lots of grants in the amount of $913,0072.12, in addition to a prior appropriation of $810,000 for the aggregate grant appropriation of $1.723,072.12 for the North End Sidewalk construction project. Resolve that the resolution of the Board of Selectmen regarding the Terriffill Bloomfield Multi-Use Path project adopted July 11th, 2022, under Selectmen Action, Item D, be amended to read as follows. Resolve that the Board of Selectmen recommends and approves, subject to referendum vote, the appropriation of lots of grants in the amount of $1.2542, in addition to a prior appropriation of $1,020,000 for the aggregate grant appropriation of $2.274,200 for the Terriffill Bloomfield Multi-Use Path project.
Is that all? I'll move that, but I also just had a comment when appropriate.
Yeah, me too. Okay, anyone, one second.
I'll second it.
Okay, second that. I'll open it for discussion, for Sarah.
I just, you know, I, I think we should go forward with the referendum question, but this is just reason 4,000 why we should open up the charter, and I think- and I think move forward expeditiously on this and other opportunities to make the charter reflect what we wanted to say.
Agreed. Okay, and I would say that in the charter comments, that we have the budget coming up. And if that's something we want to budget for in the budget, then we can do it there and plan for it over the next year. And I was also going to say that we will need to have a good communication strategy on this going out and get as much information out to the public. Maria had said that we will do a mailer to the public to let them know that this is not costing anyone any additional tax dollars. It's all grant money and it's pretty much a rite of passage that we have to do this right now. And that's all.
Just a quick, just a quick comment to add with you. I think we should also institute in our quarterly finance update where we are with respect to the 3%. Because this should never happen again where it gets through our Board of Finance where we somehow have a legal approval that becomes illegal after the fact. I'm very confused.
Yeah, we shouldn't approve, we shouldn't approve the supplemental.
It never should have happened where we've approved and then the Board of Finance somehow allowed for a valid approval at the time until somebody came back after the fact and said, no, that's not a valid approval. I don't understand how that even happened.
Okay, all those in favor?
No, hold on, I'm not finished. Go ahead.
Yeah, I forgot, sorry.
I'm sorry, thank you. That's a good recommendation. Just two quick items and I apologize. So on page, I believe it's 18 in the motion, at the bottom of the page, where it says the appropriation of LoSIP grants, that should actually say LotSIP with a T. So just for the record, that's LotSIP. LotSIP and LoSIP are actually two different grant programs. But it is a LotSIP.
So should I read these all again?
No, no, we're okay. Just to make sure that folks know that we're voting on a LotSIP grant. Not a LoSIP grant.
Okay.
Yes.
You changed that motion?
Absolutely. I would never approve a LoSIP grant.
All legal here.
And just one other, just quick pieces of commentary before you vote on the motion. Because I do just want to bring your attention to this. As Bob had mentioned, we are in a bit of an unprecedented time, really for our generation in terms of the dollars that are flowing from the federal government to the states, really to us. We do have the federal infrastructure bill coming. So there are just most likely so many opportunities that we, again, don't know what that might be. And we do also, we just had a call last week. We do have, I believe, Adam on the call, if you have questions about this. But you may recall, we did also receive a federal grant some number of years ago to help us with constructing the Lego Trail from the intersection of Route 315 to Curtis Park. We are also seeing cost escalation on that. We have indication from the federal government that they're going to increase our grant for that project. We don't yet know what that dollar value looks like. We know we have some upcoming opportunities with the Meadowwood Barns. We recently just received, while it was a small infrastructure grant, the steep grant. So again, this is really somewhat, I think, really an unprecedented time in a wonderful way where we do have a lot of opportunities to aggressively pursue infrastructure grants that will take pressure off of our capital budgets in future years. So I do think that this is going to potentially unfortunately continue to be an issue for us. We will, you know, try to monitor it more closely. And when possible, we will absolutely continue to try to incorporate it in our budget process. But again, just depending on timing of grant awards and budget process, we may have to, you know, again, in the future, as we continue to receive these grant awards, we might have, we might find ourselves in this situation again. So I just wanted to all read to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I mean, I, the good part is that it came to our attention to understand that it is something that needs to be changed in the charter prior to charter revision times coming up. But, you know, I do think we just all need to be really good about communicating that it's grant money, is what I'm saying.
So it's interesting that of the 399,000, 4,000 are issues that we need to clean up between the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance and the charter reform. Continuing theme, just to be clear, because I love administrative, you guys know, there's no path otherwise, other way forward to solve this issue that outside of going to referendum for something so small, so ridiculous. There's no path forward otherwise.
I would defer to our bond and bond counsel and general counsel on that.
Well, I think that as you get into your budget process in January, February, and March, having experienced this extraordinary flow of state and federal funding, you might want to, you know, accommodate for that in the annual budget. As long as it gets appropriated in the budget in some form or fashion, not supplemental appropriation. And I think what was unusual about this particular year is, you know, when it gets approved at the federal level, then it flows to the states, flows to the towns and cities, it all just seemed to hit at once. But now, as Maria just pointed out, there's a, there's grant funding on the horizon. And maybe you could consider during the budget process, to the extent possible, appropriating for those projects that potentially could be at least partially offset by grant funding. It's more foreseeable now than it was six months ago, so I would put it.
Okay, I'm going to take, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Did everyone say aye?
No.
Okay, that, that's. Now we're on to the new item.
Thanks, Bob. That was fun.
Thank you, Bob. I'm glad you did.
I told you, I've been waiting a week for that one.
Okay, all right. So now we're on to the bleachers. The reallocation of the funds from the Simsbury High School Air Conditioning Project to the Simsbury High School Bleacher Project. I'm going to turn this over. Some of us, I did reach out to Jason earlier and I'm sure people speak to this, but it would be good to have a little bit of a timeline for the people that are moved to the board that weren't here for the first time that just came to the board and how it's coming back to us. But I'll also let Maria weigh in here on what we're doing.
Sure. So recently, when the Board of Education had gone out to bid for the bleacher project, that lowest responsible bid did come in over budget. They did have another approved capital project, which was the high school HVAC project that came in under budget. And so what we're proposing here is to reallocate savings from the high school air conditioning project to the high school bleacher project. So essentially covering that overrun with savings. So it would not be a tax impact to the taxpayers and that we are not seeking additional funds or new funds, but a reallocation of previously approved funds, both again of which were capital projects that were approved through the budget process. I'm not sure, perhaps Jason, if you would be best positioned to talk a little bit about the bleacher project and the overrun and any other points you feel would be important for them to know.
Sure.
Thanks.
So I'll get into the timeline in a minute, but just some facts here. The bleacher seating capacity is at 850 seats. And that depends on how you're measuring what a seat is. Usually it's about 24 inches. That becomes more important, wait, I'm going to go through this. The bleachers are built in 68. They don't meet the current safety and ADA codes. There's a variety of safety codes that they don't meet. And periodically, they don't provide enough seating during some of the more heavily attended events. We are grandfathered in on these codes, but the code violations have to be addressed if any improvements or repair work are performed. So aside from the obvious accessibility and safety issues, it's also waiting for us with very old bleachers that the minute they need work, this is something that's going to have to be fully addressed. So in 2020, we originally requested 1,400-seat replacement to address all of these issues at a cost of $850,000. That did not pass. So in 2021, we requested $600,000 for a same-size, same-capacity bleacher, another 850-seat bleacher. This did pass. Planning and zoning, that process took a considerably long amount of time. That finished up on January 10th of 2022. And that didn't give us enough time to put the project out to bid and begin construction ahead of the next sports season. So we delayed the start of that until the end of effectively this current sports season. So in preparation for building this, we went out to bid and we got our estimates in. However, between December of 2020 and this summer, basically COVID happened. So we had major supply chain issues. Aluminum costs went up, fuel costs went up. And the bid that we did receive was approximately $880,000 for a 900-seat bleacher. Now, there's a little confusion, especially in the language from the planning and zoning minutes, in that the proposal was for 1,082 seats. But again, it depends on where you fall on the side of that 24 inches. So the manufacturers of these things tend to measure seats a lot narrower to make their bleachers sound like you're getting more seats for the buck. So in an effort to do an apples-to-apples comparison, I looked at the number of feet of each row and then the number of rows and then determined based on what the current bleacher size is, and we're calling it 850 seats, how does that track with what the quote that came in? So that's how, it's really a 900-seat bleacher that we're looking at, at the $880,000 price tag. And to that end, again, our design requirement was a similar capacity bleacher. It does go up from 850 to 900. And that's really just that there are certain manufacturing component sizes that you're not going to get exactly, you can't build a exactly 850-seat to the foot that you want. You're based on how this is being developed.
So that means you put the same project out to bid that was approved, right?
Yes, I did.
You didn't put the original project from, that was turned down. You put the project that was approved out to bid, and it's a matter of semantics. It's an airline, some airlines, seats are 23 inches, some are 24.
Right.
Yes, the question I asked Jason was basically the new price. Isn't based on a seating increase. It's still based on pretty much the same thing. And it was due to the cost of the increased product.
It's based on the same thing. I mean, it is from 850 to 900. So I guess technically it's slightly bigger. It's a 6% increase.
Well, we're talking about a cost increase.
Yeah.
Just like we've seen every square. Project we're talking about.
Right. It's a, yeah.
Okay.
It is a not surprising cost increase.
Thank you.
But it is not a scope creepish.
No, it's material cost.
Correct.
Thank you.
I have some questions. I don't know if we're opening. So questions are if you guys still have information.
And with that, I ask that you reallocate the funds.
Okay. I have one question. On the $450,000, has that been bonded yet?
Oh, no, we have not bonded.
Okay.
The $450,000, what 400?
The $450,000 that was bonded was going to be bonded of the initial cost.
Ah, there we go.
So, so right now, the cost is 1,200, pretty much 1,200, $1.2 million, right? Agreed?
You're talking about the air conditioning.
I'm talking about the air conditioning because this is all, right? The air conditioning is $1.2 million. We, 1.256.
The air conditioning project, if you go to page 12, it was an appropriation of $1.65 million. That was the estimate that we had at the time of budget adoption.
Right.
1.2 was proposed to be funded with cash, which was, the original source was the ARPA dollars. And 450 of that was proposed to be funded by bonds.
Okay. So what I was asking was, now the real cost is 1.256, right? We've already budgeted 1.6. Is that locked in?
Yeah, that quote is.
That's not going to change.
Correct.
Okay, that was one question. The only question I had, well, I have a couple other questions, was, so technically, if we didn't move this money to the bleachers, we could fund, we could fund the HVAC solely with the cash from ARPA and not bond for the 450. Is that true? If we haven't bonded that 450 yet?
But we have bonding authorization for the 450 for this project specifically.
Okay, so you can't, okay. Well, I was just trying to see if there was a way to not charge 450.
Towards bonding.
Yes. So you're saying that's a done deal, excuse me.
From accounting standpoint, we would bond the 450 and use less cash. Is that what you're saying? We would pay for this?
We're using the cash for the bleachers.
Well, so we could either not bond for now, or we could use the cash.
But we can't bond for bleachers. We have to bond for air conditioners.
The project.
Because that's the third way to run bonds.
Right.
I'm just making it that if we did not do the bleachers, I'm just saying, we could take the 1 point. It sounds like we have to bond for it, but we have 1.2 million cash that could pay for the HVAC. The $400 bleacher cost would not get bought, would not get covered if we didn't want to bond the 450.
It can't. We only have bond authorization.
I got that from Amy now, so that I'm, okay. So we have to, we have to go through the 450 bonding. The other question I had was, you answered the 20, the change in the project, which was the 600 that we approved originally. And I just wanted to comment too that the code violations, they haven't changed since we initially brought the project forward. But any change, any, any touching of the bleachers is why we have to adhere to it right now. It's kind of what I was.
Correct.
Nothing has changed in that since it was approved in 2021. But in order to move forward, like, there's no, there's no additional urgency to the bleachers than there was in 2021 as far as safety goes. It's still out there the way it has been, is my point. Like, there's no increased safety risk.
That's correct. There's not, as they were, or worse.
Okay.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Since I wasn't here with it.
Well, maybe it is a pretty major safety risk.
Okay, yeah, I mean, was that? I'm just saying. I know that. I got that.
The reasons to doing it are as legitimate as they were in 2020.
Yes, I got that.
Right, I guess that's my question, having not been here for those original discussions. I mean, it seems like what we're talking about right now is more of a funding matter. We're not reopening, questioning whether or not we're going forward on the bleacher project, right? Because that has already been decided.
Not for this cost though. Not for the extra $350,000. We're making a decision here.
So I would say that, so we're, we're not here to, I don't want to, I don't want to litigate whether we need new bleachers.
Right, that's what I'm asking. I'm saying.
I think it's also fair to say if today was 2020 costs, if the money, we wouldn't be sitting here trying to determine whether a seat should cost 2 bucks or 6 bucks. We would probably, absent the knowledge that this project could have been done for less, we would approve, we would still approve the project.
Okay.
Next question.
Sure.
So I assume that for some reason, if it was, if we weren't able to do this, the number one priority or one of the top priorities in the Board of Ed in the coming fiscal year would be the bleachers replaced. So we're either paying for this now, or we're paying for this.
We would have the conversation.
Right.
That's a good question.
Right, because that's important, right? That's something we talked about with the Board of Finance. This is still one of our top priorities because of the safety issue, right?
Correct.
It's why we talked about it in '20. It's why we talked about it in '21, and it's why we're back here.
Yes.
And what you're proposing is an opportunity to use savings for one project to pay for this one and not have it impact the coming fiscal year.
Potentially, in case something else.
We don't have to go to referendum on this one, right?
No. Okay.
Sure.
I'm going to ask for a motion effective November 28th. Did you want to add anything, Maria? Okay, November 28th, 2022, to increase the appropriation for the Simsbury High School Bleacher Project by $345,000 funded by a capital project transfer from savings from the Simsbury High School Air Conditioning Project.
What about?
I'll second.
Oh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there's the bleachers for next fall. Is that the deal? Okay, we have two more items.
I would like to note.
Okay, item F.
I'd like to note that I did sit in those bleachers last Sunday and watched the Simsbury Youth Football, 7th and 8th Grade, finish an unprecedented undefeated season and win the championship for the Nutmeg State Championship.
Congratulations. Congrats.
Did you feel safe?
How did grace you?
Did you feel safe?
I was standing.
Were there 950 or were there 900 people?
I meant to ask.
I know, all I think, all I think it was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I can't either.
And Selectmen, you guessed who's there too.
Okay, item F. This is the real number, F. Thank you, guys, for being here and answering the questions. The State Historic Preservation Office Historic Restoration Fund Grant. This is around the Meadowwood Barns. I'm going to let Maria take this one and explain it.
Sure, great. So I'll start and I believe it's, great, Adam, our deputy town engineer is on. So he may want to add something to it as well. But as I know you want to hear, we have received some grant commitments already from the State Office of Historic Preservation, as well as from a donor, to help towards restoring some number of our tobacco barns that were part of the Meadowwood acquisition. Those currently were awarded to TPL. So we are working through logistics of whether or not we would, you know, have those pass through to us. And so logistically, we are working through that. But we do have a summary under financial impact. But, uh, we do have a summary under financial impact, um, that we, uh, have two hundred and forty thousand committed for construction, um, sixty thousand for various interpretive exhibits, um, and again, eighty-five thousand, um, from a donor for construction as well. Um, and we have, as you might recall, been working on a very detailed structural analysis with a structural engineer. Um, we were the recipients of two twenty thousand dollar grants, um, from Shibo earlier this year. Uh, in terms of, again, looking at essentially sort of a planning. And structural, um, work that would be needed on those barns. And what we are finding is that, um, the cost to restore, uh, would be quite substantial. Um, and they have, uh, the State Office of Historic Preservation does have another grant program, which is the Historic Restoration Fund, um, that we would be eligible for. That could be additional, um, grant dollars that we could use towards restoration of the barns. Um, so what we are proposing this evening, um, is that we receive permission to apply for the grant. Um, there is a local match required with this grant on a one-for-one basis. Um, we do have some ideas that we're working through. Um, particularly, um, you might recall that we are receiving lease revenue for the barns on site that are still in good working condition, as well as lease revenue for the working farm, the ag lease. Um, so, uh, one possibility, again, that we're working through, should we be awarded the grant application would be to essentially, um, borrow against the upcoming lease revenue and pay back, um, the capital reserve. Um, there are other options, um, again, for the local match. But at this point in time, in that ordinarily, you would say, okay, let's apply for the grant and then have you proactively accept it. But because we are still working on potential funding options for that local match. Um, again, tonight, because of the grant application deadline, we're just hoping to receive your permission to apply. For it, and then should we be awarded the grant, we would come back to you with some potential options, um, for funding that local match. Um, Adam, is there anything you'd like to add?
Evening, everybody.
Hey.
No, I think you summed it up nicely. Um, this, we're seeing with our timeline, this is our, our grant. And, uh, we're hopeful that we're in front of Shibo, uh, in January to, um, move forward and hopefully receive that, that grant.
Okay.
So, question. So just, uh, again, just, so we're, if, if we get this, we have to come up with two hundred thousand?
Potentially, um, potentially.
Yeah, and that's, it's fine, but I, I guess, just, and we don't need it tonight, but maybe just an aggregate of, um, at some point in the finance report of what's coming up to move it through. Because again, two hundred in a vacuum is, is maybe not a big deal, but we've got a bunch of other grants, right? And we're gonna all of a sudden have to figure out CNR, Lo sip, Lot sip, cash, capital reserve. Oh boy, we gotta go to referendum again.
Yeah.
In the not-too-distant future. And I just want to make sure that we've got a vantage point of that. Because again, off-budget, these sound like a great idea, and then we get into the capital plans, we're like, where is those two hundred going to come from? Right? It's hard.
No, it's, it's a fair point. And, um, one of the items that we've discussed is, again, not for, some of our sources do potentially not.
No.
Take the two hundred thousand. Um, in terms of the lease revenue, um, we are receiving nine thousand dollars annually for the tobacco barns. Use, and, and I'm using a round number, about twenty-five thousand dollars for the ag lease. Um, so those are real dollars that are coming in. Um, I know we had talked previously about, you know, we could use those for, right, future needs of barns, farmlands, open space, et cetera. Um, so again, we thought that might be, again, a particularly a good use of some of those lease dollars that are coming in to perhaps use those lease dollars as part of the local match. Um, so we will come to you with that and some other options to look at and evaluate, but that's a fair point.
Yeah, we should just update the board of finance too, right? Because again, this is stuff that they don't like to find out about at the last minute of the budget.
Yeah.
It's not fair to them either, right?
They read our agendas.
Yeah, but, but so, and it's, you know.
No, I hear you.
I do give them a hard time about stuff, but we also need to be transparent with them. That if we're going to commit ourselves to potential future funding, we need to be, we need to be open and proactive with them.
Agreed, agreed. Okay. I'm up. So, um, ask for a motion effective November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, to authorize the middle of a grant application for the State Historic Preservation Office Historic Restoration Fund Grant. That's a long name for Meadowwood Barnes.
So moved.
Thank you. I'll second. Thank you. Um, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so go fill out your application for Thursday.
Adam, thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
Okay, we get to end on the fun one. The Board of Selectmen twenty-twenty-three regular meeting schedule. We get to envision twenty-twenty-three now, tonight. Um, so Maria, you want to talk about what's in here and, and the dates and why we have these dates the way we do?
Sure, so, um, we did our best in most instances to follow our past practice. So for most, uh, months, meeting the second and fourth Monday of the month. Um, we traditionally have done one meeting in the months of July and August, as well as one meeting in December and non-election years. Uh, but the upcoming year will be an election year, so we do have two meetings in December. And, um, by our charter, the first meeting, your organizational meeting, is the first Monday. So that's always a little off, and we have noted that there would be, um, a meeting on the first Monday of December and the third Monday, um, of December, given that it will be your organizational meeting year. There were a few other observations that we've had, just with timing of meetings, dates, et cetera. Um, so we did propose a few additional changes for the upcoming meeting calendar for your consideration. Um, one is we typically in April will not meet the second, uh, week of April because of school vacation week, but sort of expedite and move up the meeting to the first week in April, which usually provides a very condensed, um, time in between your March meeting and your April meeting. And sometimes it's around seven to ten days in between meetings. Um, but then also timing of the budget public hearing and when we need to set the referendum date, et cetera. We're often calling a special meeting the third week of April. Um, so one thought we had here was just to do one meeting in April on the third Monday of the month. And that might help with some of those scheduling issues we've had. Um, we also noticed this past year, um, that, uh, we were struggling with a quorum at the end of June. Um, as people were beginning their summer vacation schedules and traveling, um, so potentially, um, to maybe just hold one meeting in June. And then because it's an organizational meeting year, um, if we were to hold the second meeting in November, um, as we did tonight, it's right after Thanksgiving, but then we would be having another board meeting seven days later. Again, just the timing of how it worked out this year. Um, so again, our recommendation was just to hold one meeting in November, because we would be meeting on the first Monday, um, in December. Um, so those were our, our few additional proposed, um, changes for your consideration. Um, we also, as in past years, um, there were two meetings that would fall on an official holiday, um, that is observed by the state or, um, a holiday that, that you all will generally, um, observe, so moving those to Wednesdays. And also, uh, we've added the two budget workshops on the calendar as well. So in the event that you wanted to add something to the agenda, you could for those meetings.
I, I was just gonna comment, there's a couple, March, other things just to note in March that are not on here, but just kind of why it might be okay to have one meeting in April. Um, April fourth is the Board of Finance Public Hearing, which we all go to. Then we have the twenty-first, which is a Board of Selectmen presentation to the Board of Finance, which a lot of us go to. March seventh is the Board of Ed to the Board of Finance, which some of us go to. Um, I do like the idea of not meeting tonight, the Monday after Thanksgiving for all of us who are away and, um, detached. And for these guys who have to get everything ready by the Wednesday before, because they're off Thursday and Friday. So I'm good with that Thursday miss, and I think we'll just double up on business as needed, um, for the meetings where we have one during the month. That, those are my feelings, if anybody would like to weigh in.
Yeah, I think these are good changes. They make a lot of sense for what's actually happened. And if we need to have an ad hoc meeting, we can have an ad hoc meeting next month.
Yep, okay. Um, I ask for a motion effective November twenty-eighth to authorize the middle of a, oh, that's the wrong one. Sorry. Um, to move effective to approve the Board of Selectmen twenty-twenty-three regular meeting schedule as presented. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Um, oh, we have a resignation. Um, unfortunately, um, Marilyn Rotunda passed away, who was on the Juvenile Review, Review Board. Um, was very hard, very sorry to hear that. And I'm gonna have to make, ask for a motion to move effective November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two to post, how do you say that? Post. Post, I never say it.
Posthumously.
Uh, acknowledge the resignation of Marilyn Rotundo as a member of the Juvenile Review Board. Any second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the November fourteenth meeting, anybody have any changes to that? Uh, and then I think we can ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.